Okay, I'll call the meeting to order. All three commissioners are present. It was properly posted on September 19th. District Three will lead our prayer.
Mr. Barnes is actually going to lead that for us today, so thank you, Mr. Barnes.
Let's pray. Father God, we're again truly grateful for the opportunities that you provide, and we're an opportunity to serve others, to help one another. We thank you for the changing of seasons, Lord, and for your protection from severe weather. Thank you for the reminders that you're in control of all things, Father. Pray for the commissioners and their staffs and the remainder of the county family. Lord, you would just guide us today, help us to be diligent in our duties and responsibilities. We pray for those who protect us, Father, both here and abroad. Just ask a special measure of grace on them and their families. We love you, praise you, and ask call this in Jesus' name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America
Sir, a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th?
and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll move our minute.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is the P card standard? Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 13th?
I'll move approval. I think we're waiting. I'll move our minute.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is the P card standard? Okay.
I'll move approval.
I think we're waiting. Okay, now you can hit your button. Okay, now you can hit your button. All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Claims. Claims.
Okay, I'll move our claims. Okay, I'll move our claims.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Shantel. Shantel.
This item is for recommendation for CW24022-1 grocery products. This item is for recommendation for CW24022-1 grocery products. We received one bid over the last couple of years. That has been the trend, just receive one bid. This is for fresh produce only. We received one bid over the last couple of years. That has been the trend, just receive one bid. This is for fresh produce only. So fruits and vegetables. So fruits and vegetables. We received a new vendor on this bid this time. We received a new vendor on this bid this time. We did a lot of cost comparisons to see what the differences are. The market is changing a little bit in that area, as you guys probably know at the grocery stores. We did a lot of cost comparisons to see what the differences are. The market is changing a little bit in that area, as you guys probably know at the grocery stores. But we want to reject this bid to do some more cost effective options. We do have options of state contract, national contracts, But we want to reject this bid to do some more cost effective options. We do have options of state contract, national contracts, and see what that looks like when it comes to delivery and availability. and see what that looks like when it comes to delivery and availability. And so we spoke with the juvenile office, who uses this bid, and they're in agreement as well, just to take a little bit of time to re-review And so we spoke with the juvenile office, who uses this bid, and they're in agreement as well, just to take a little bit of time to re-review and look at some more cost effective options. and look at some more cost effective options.
I'll move that we reject the bid, or do I move that we strike? I'll move that we reject the bid, or do I move that we strike?
Move to reject. Move to reject.
Okay. Okay.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Number five is Number five is P24120-01. This is geotechnical services for our new jail. P24120-01. This is geotechnical services for our new jail. And this has to do with the new land site selection involved with this review was our HOK representative. And this has to do with the new land site selection involved with this review was our HOK representative. So the architect for the jail, as well as Citizens Oversight Advisory Board members were a part of this, engineering department. So the architect for the jail, as well as Citizens Oversight Advisory Board members were a part of this, engineering department. They shortlisted three firms to interview for these services. It's a lot of land testing inspections and things of that nature. They shortlisted three firms to interview for these services. It's a lot of land testing inspections and things of that nature. And the most qualified firm I am recommending a word to is Olson for those services. And the most qualified firm I am recommending a word to is Olson for those services.
Do you have any comments? Do you have any comments? Okay. Okay. I'll move approval of the recommendation of our citizen advisory board and of our purchasing office. I'll move approval of the recommendation of our citizen advisory board and of our purchasing office.
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
We have counsel present with us. Is it a board's pleasure to go ahead and recess into executive session? We have counsel present with us. Is it a board's pleasure to go ahead and recess into executive session?
Sure. Sure. I'll move we recess into executive session. I'll move we recess into executive session.
Second. Second.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Do you want to do those executive session items now?
Sure.
Okay, we'll have a motion to return to regular session.
Move to return.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item twenty five.
Item twenty five, I move that we appoint Commissioner Davidson to serve in mediation, and I believe that is my motion.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. And items twenty six and twenty seven, my motion is the same. Move we disclaim subject to any unpaid property taxes.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye. And on item twenty eight, I move the board motion to waive subrogation in this case.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Returning to the consent docket, is there any individual consideration?
I don't think we did so.
We didn't do so, yeah.
Okay, no change to the blanket? There is a change, okay?
The change is related to a later item, it's Accenture's contract. This is just the encumbrance for that contract. And so, we can approve the blanket subject to approval of that item, or we can take the blanket report at the end. But that's the only item I had to add to it.
And remind me what item number it is?
Seventeen, yes, okay. I will move approval of our blanket purchase orders subject to approval of item seventeen.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, is there any individual consent docket items you wish to consider not?
I'll move approval on our consent agenda.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Engineering.
Yeah, we need to strike this item and I'll bring it back to you. City of Arcadia wanted a few small changes on it.
I'll move to strike.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Karen? Okay, is there a motion to strike?
Uh, move to strike item sixteen.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
You want to cover this, Commissioner Blumer?
Um, this is our, I believe we did from Joe, am I correct that from July first to September thirtieth, we extended their contract? But this is from October first to June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, with an option to renew their contract for up to two years. Can you remind me that, Shantel, can you remind me the changes from the first contract we signed?
Yes, so primarily your term. We've been basing this contract on a fiscal year basis. There has been a lot of communication on do we just go ahead and enter into a contract for the remaining of the ARPA timeframe? And so today, this is just a contract to finish out the fiscal year, mainly because the recommendation from Accenture reflects another change in the contract. They broke out their scope of services into phases. Because as we move along in the ARPA timeframe, some of those duties change versus reporting, eligibility, auditing, whatever those may be. And we can experience some cost savings with the fee as we move forward. Some of those duties may get a little bit lighter as we move ahead. So with this contract, the fixed fee does stay the same until the end of the fiscal year, and there'll be another contract review to talk about those changes in scope of duties come June of this fiscal year. Okay, so those are the main changes of this contract, is there anything you may add?
Okay.
Substantive terms remain.
Are the same, okay.
And we have someone here from Accenture, right? If you need anything to say.
That's right, this is Travis Gold. He is our local office with Accenture representative. You'll be seeing him a little bit more often in our meetings. If you have any questions, he's available.
I do have two comments. Number one, love the purple. Number two, I want to say very good things about Danny and Jamie. I've gotten really good feedback from the nonprofits that we awarded ARPA money to. They have told me that they've really enjoyed working with Danielle and Jamie. So I just wanted to give both of them a shout out.
Well, thank you. We enjoy you all as well in supporting citizens of Oklahoma County. If there's anything that I can do, you know, being the office managing director, I know a few of you may have attended our opening, and we look forward to engaging, you know, further in the community here. And so, I'm right down the street if you need anything.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'll move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Avery, I know you're here for the school resource officers. Is there anything in particular you want to cover on them?
Eighteen and nineteen are renewals. Twenty, twenty is a new position that Santa Fe South is picking up, but they are paying a hundred percent. You'll see that the dollar amount is prorated because they don't officially start until November. True. That's, the twenty is going to be the fifth SRO at Santa Fe South is fully funded at a hundred percent.
Okay, is there a motion for all three items?
Can you remind me how many SROs we have total?
Right now, I think we have twenty eight.
Nice.
I will move approval of items eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Any commissioner comments, District One?
I don't think so.
Three?
If you didn't know, the sheriff just got, hey Avery, what did the sheriff get elected to? He's the national representative for the region of something or another.
So he is, uh, he just got, he's on the board at the major counties. So within the United States, only, there's only certain sheriff's offices offices that can participate in this major counties organization group. And based on our population, he just got elected onto the board. So he's now a major counties, which is a very big deal. So.
If you didn't know how big of a rock star he is, everybody else is telling us, so.
Thank you. Any new business? Any citizens wish to be heard? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Everybody in?
No, sorry. Yes.
Okay, I'll call it to order. The PBA, all three trustees are present. September nineteenth is when it was properly posted. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September thirteenth?
I'll move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve the claims?
I'll move our claims.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Monroe?
Item three is a cash fund appropriation, the amount of seven thousand dollars for the Lincoln property to fund salary and benefits through the end of this quarter. If you recall, we're funding these things quarterly so we can keep a tight hold on expenditures.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item four is alike. Item four, Metro Parking, again salaries and benefits in the amount of six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item five, again is a like item for the Investors Capital Building in the amount of five thousand five hundred dollars.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item six is an appropriation of three hundred and one thousand nine hundred and sixty four dollars and forty five cents into PBA reserve.
Move approval.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item seven is the PBA report of fees for the month of August, two thousand and twenty three.
Uh, move to receive.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item eight is the Metro Parking report of fees for August, two thousand and twenty three.
And move to receive.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Now, any citizens wishing to speak for the PBA? If not, are there any board comments or new business? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move we adjourn.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.